Good afternoon and welcome to the Board of Commissioners, special called meaning work session for October 28, 2014. There are two tabs for our work session this morning. Tab one for the SPOS update and tab two, financial update and status report. We are going to begin with tab two and then go to tab one. Tab two is from finance to present the 2014 status report for the Cobb County Government Employees Pension Plan and Retirement Health Plan. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Hankerson. It's my pleasure to come before y'all this afternoon and present once again the 2014 update on our pension plan and our OPEB, other post-employment benefit plans. That's for retiree healthcare. These are based off of the actuarial reports that we receive as well as some real-time data through 9/30/2014. The actuarial reports, for the record, are done as of January 1, 2014. This is the team that manages the fund. We have the Board of Trustees, myself and Tony Hagler, HR Director, as well as former Sheriff Bill Hudson, Jack Demarest, who serves also on the Board of Tax Assessors, has been a great addition this year, and Dr. Roger Tutterow. We have a great board this year with some great additions of Jack Demarest and Dr. Tutterow. Our master trustee is SunTrust Bank with Ken Filman, who serves in that role for us. And we have a legal advisor, Evelyn Traub of Trotman &amp; Sanders. We have UBS Financial Services that is our investment advisors. They make recommendations on managers that manage the funds as well as monitoring them on a daily basis. That's Earl Dodd, Van Dyke Price, and Alan Wright. Our actuaries, Cavanaugh, McDonald Consulting, primarily Jose Fernandez and Alisa Bennett. And then we have county staff that also works closely with us, Phil Volkman, Assistant Comptroller, Buddy Tesar, Finance Division Manager, as well as Tressie Bloodworth from the HR staff. I won't go through these in details, but these are our fund managers for our equity funds. We have 14 fund managers. And if you look on the next slide, we have six or five fixed income managers, one of those being Cigna. Manager performance, the market rate of return for the total fund, the goal is 7.9%. It was 8%, we're scaling that back to 7.5% over a five-year period. We actually achieved this year 20.16%. It's been a tremendous year. We've had a somewhat of a rough month this year, starting to recover, but we did achieve 20.16%. The five-year period is 13.4%, the 10-year period 7.16%. Inception, going back to June 1994, we're at 8.55%. The rate of return on an actuarial value basis is 12.7%. So when we get our actuarial numbers, we actually use the 12.07% and I'll explain that in just a few minutes. This is the mix of our portfolio. We're 75% stocks, 25% bonds, and that is the limits that state allows. And then the plans that we offer, we have the traditional plan, which is 100% defined benefit. We have the hybrid plan, which began January 1, 2010. This consists of a defined benefit component as well as a defined contribution component. And then as of 2008, we have the OPEB, other post-employment benefits, and that's for our healthcare. The traditional plan, if you were hired prior to January 1, 2010, you would be in the traditional plan unless you made a one-time option to go to the hybrid plan. It's defined benefit, mandatory contribution. This year, we're at 6.5% of employees' compensation is contributed. And there's a 2.5% factor on the average annual earnings. And that number can change depending on how long you've been with the county. Typically, it's five consecutive years within the last 10. And the maximum service accrual is 35 years. The hybrid component, we have a mandatory contribution for the defined benefit, 1% of your earnings up to a maximum of 35 years. And we also have a defined contribution component. It's voluntary. Employees can contribute up to 4% where the county would match 50% of that. So if you contribute 1%, the county would match 0.5%. The employee can contribute more than the 4% to their 457 plan, but the county would match up to that 4% limit in a separate plan, a 401A plan, which would be up to 2%, which is free money to the employee. It's a great opportunity for the employees. And another part of the defined contribution component is that beginning in 2014, the contribution for the employee was reduced from 5% to 3%. And that was based on aligning the normal cost for the defined benefit pension component more to the employee's retirement. So that saved the employee 2% on their take-home cash beginning last year. There are currently 955 employees in the hybrid plan. 97 opted to move from the traditional to the hybrid back in January 1, 2010. And we've had 858 employees become a part of the hybrid plan since January 1, 2010. Currently, we're at 1,150 employees as of the last pay run. 100% are enrolled in the defined benefit and 59.8% are in the defined contribution. That's up 10% from last year. So that's very good that the employees are taking advantage of the defined contribution 65% of those employees that are in the defined contribution are contributing the max of 4%. So that's very positive as well. In total, there were 688 employees out of the 1,150 that are participating in the defined contribution. So that's very positive. Overall goals, to develop a strong participation in the defined contribution plan. The 457 is what all employees can contribute to, and there are some limits set by federal law. But we only have 27.87% of participation. That's down from 29.9% from this last year. The hybrid plan is 59.8%, so that's strong. They have an opt-in or an opt-out, which means when they hire with the county, they have to make a decision not to be a part of it, whereas before it was they had to make a decision to be a part. So they're in until they opt out. And again, we want to continue to work with ICMA and others to look at educational programs and opportunities to educate the employees on the importance of taking advantage of these defined contribution options that are available. The makeup of our defined benefit plans, this is both hybrid and traditional, we have 1,892 retirees and beneficiaries that are receiving benefits. We have 876 that have retired but are yet to receive benefits. They're vested former employees. Then we have, as of January 1, 2014, 4,041 active employees, 2,560 are fully vested, and 1,481 are non-vested. So it's a good mix. We're seeing more of the hybrid coming online, making up a bigger percentage of the total workforce, which will help our plan long-term as well. The defined benefit, traditional and hybrid component. We have a long-term plan in place. The economy has improved. We've had a rough couple of weeks with the markets, but we've seen those rebound the last week or so. We've implemented some proactive changes. The hybrid plan certainly is one of the biggest changes that's been made to our pension plan. We phased down the discount rate from 8 to 7.5%. While that makes it a little bit tougher to swallow in the near term, it's definitely going to pay off in the long term. It makes it a more manageable plan. We've closed the 30-year amortization period so that that's going to start going down till you have zero years left, which means we'll be 100% funded. We're not going to keep refinancing the liability every year. And we've reduced the defined contribution rate for hybrid employees from 5 to 3%. Again, that was the right thing to do, and it certainly puts more money in the pocket of those hybrid employees so that they can participate in the 457 if they wanted to. We also did an experience study. The experience study looks out five years to see how our plan is from an actuarial standpoint to make sure we've got the right assumptions. The pre-retirement mortality rate tables were updated. Retirement rate updates were for public safety employees and general employees. And we also looked at the withdrawal rates. Those were modified. And the discount rate went from 8 to 7.9 down to 7.8. And those changes are needed so that we get a clear picture of where we're going to be long-term and what our costs are. And that added $39.7 million worth of liability to our plan just by updating the tables and making sure that we're current with the life expectancy of our employees. Next slide, this is where we are today. We're 53.4% funded. We're moving in the right direction, but that's not a good number. You can see the biggest hit came back in 1998 when we did the Rule of 80. We gave a retro benefit, which dropped our plan down 24, 26% down to 69%. If you look at the 100% line, that would be $871 million. To fully fund our plan, that 100% would be $871 million. We currently have actuarial value of assets at $464 million. So our liability is $407 million. And that's what we need to start chipping away at with the discount rate as well as with the closing amortization period. The liability breaks out to 53% of the liability is to retirees and beneficiaries. 3.1% are those term vested employees, and then the remainder is active employees. So a bulk of the liability is assigned to the current retirees and term invested. Gatsby standards, we're under new Gatsby standards this year. And we're going to take the information that's in this chart. It's usually in the notes to our financial statements. It's going to go to the balance sheet. So you're going to see a $400-plus-million liability on our balance sheets beginning this next year. Where before that was just disclosed in the footnotes. This is the contribution requirements that are actuarially determined. Very quickly, if you look at the bottom two numbers on each of the columns, we have a $12.9 million net pension asset. This is inception to date so that we've met the actuarially required contributions that have been determined by our actuary since the plan started, which is very positive. We're meeting our obligations. We're doing things right. We're making some strategic plan adjustments to address the liability. But we are moving in the right direction and we're funding our obligations as required. To look at the actuarial value of assets, we use the five-year smoothing method, and I want to just talk about this for a quick second. Next slide, please. This is a five-year smoothing. The impact, if you look at the market total, in 2014, we had $81.4 million worth of investment income with our retirement plan. The assumed rate of return, our actuarial discount rate is 7.9%. And there's a little bit that goes into the calculation, but roughly that equals $34.396 million. We're going to recognize the 7.9% in the current year as market gain. The difference between the total market gain and the 34.6, we're going to smooth that over a five-year period. So we're going to take the 7.9% investment return, and everything above and beyond that, we're going to smooth out over a five-year period. And you see the current year, we've got $9,396,000. We're going to show that for the next four to five, next five years. That's going to be in our five-year smoothing, which is very positive. Last year, we had a $19 million loss. That was year five. That's dropped off. We've added a $9.4 million plus, so we have a $28.8 million swing in our five-year investment income recognition, which is positive. The rate of return on an actuarial value is 12.7%. If you take the actuarial value of the assets and the actuarial liability, we've earned 12.7%. That factors in the smoothing and some other small items as well. But that's where we are, 12.7% actuarial. The difference between the 12.7 and the 7.9% is approximately, I believe, about $17 million worth of gain that we've added based just on the actuarial side of the calculation. Next slide. Thirty-year projection results, funding status again is at 53.4%. We are, through a 30-year projection, this is fully funded. Again, it takes patience, it takes time. With the reduction from 8 to 7.5%, we would be 100% funded in 2039 based on these assumptions that are here today. And we are, again, the assumptions are coming more in line with market conditions with the 7.5% from the 8%. Traditional hybrid plan's overall goal, maintain a fiscally sound plan. Defined benefit looks at the long-term, and again, to be over 100% funded in a 30-year period. And the next slide just shows a chart of how that funding is based on the experience and funding projections from the actuary. The other plan that we have is the OPEB healthcare plan. This was started back in 2008 based on generally accepted accounting, Gatsby standards, GAAP principles that were required to follow. We started out at 0% funding. We're up to 42.3%. We attach this to the employer side of the employee healthcare, of the employer contribution for healthcare. So in years 2008 through 2011, we added a 30% load to the employer cost of healthcare premiums. That's now down to 8%. One of the things that helps significantly with this plan, again, is the decision to move to Extend Health, which when you get to be 65 years or older, you go to an Extend Health program where you have Medicare options. This was suggested through our HR team and Mr. Hankerson. This saved about $70 to $80 million in our required contribution, our liability. It saves $6 million in annual OPEB funding cost as well as about $3 million in premiums on health insurance. So this one decision alone saves the county roughly $9 million a year in actual cash, which is a great recommendation, a great program that HR has brought forward for us to implement. And this is the OPEB funding. Again, we're meeting our obligations. In 9/30/2014, we are $7.8 million above what was required. We're funding our obligations. The plan is solvent and solid. And this is something that, when I go to national conferences, this is something that is looked very favorably upon, how Cobb has managed its OPEB funding and how we funded it over the years and where we're at with that funding percentage. Going forward, we'll continue with innovative education to make sure that we get the defined contribution numbers up in that 457 plan. Human resources and finance, provide pension updates, maintain our webpage, and work with ICMA to make sure that we're getting the educational materials out to the employees in the field. And again, we have a new pension and accounting standard, Gatsby 67 and 68. And that's going to take things that were in the notes and put them on the financial statements, which should give a more transparent disclosure of the health of our plan. In closing, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Hankerson, the Board of Trustees remains committed to evaluating on a regular basis the status of our retirement plans. We take very seriously our fiduciary responsibility to make sure that this plan remains fiscally sound and sustainable for the employees of Cobb County going forward. With that, I'm glad to take any questions or comments that y'all might have.
Thank you, sir. Good presentation. Appreciate the work of the group over the year in getting us some positive results. Commissioners, any comments or questions for Jim?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one question for clarity.
Okay.
Just know that it's intimidating asking a question over such complex material. So please forgive me if you've addressed this, but there is a projection that the fund would be fully funded in 2039 that takes into account not just existing persons who are utilizing the pension, but all eligible employees?
All eligible employees, and it goes, yes, that's correct. The retirees and the active employees.
Interesting, okay.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Good job. I know also when we go up to the Rating Aids and Cs in June, we spent a lot of time on this as well. And they've, to date, they've seemed very favorable in the direction we're heading, handling not only, you know, everybody likes to be above 53% funded, but they like our plan and they think it's sound, and they support it, obviously with a triple AAA. So thank you to you and your team and everyone that you mentioned on the page that's a part of this success, and the Board of Trustees, the advisors, the actuaries, staff, and the other folks involved. Thank you for making this happen. This is good information. This will go on the webpage, and folks will have more opportunity. Any of the folks that are here today or at home, or any of the retirees have any questions, they can contact your office for more details, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Jim. Absolutely wonderful. County manager, any comments?
No, sir.
Thank you. So our second tab will be our first tab, which is the quarterly update on a 2011 SPOS Director de Massimo.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioner, County Manager, we're pleased to offer this quarterly update on the 2011 SPOS. Quarterly update includes the division, of course, of all of the programs, the $492 million in projected SPOS collections across transportation, parks and recreation, public safety facilities, and our municipalities. We see the, we've exceeded the projected receipts by over $25 million through September of 2014. That's 32 months collected, which is good news for us. And with that, I'm going to introduce the city of Powder Springs to come up and give their SPOS update. Pam?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'd like to first start off by saying thank you to the county for your assistance and support to the city in implementing our program. With that relationship, I think we have a lot of good public improvements that both city and county residents enjoy. So thank you for that. Wanted to just give you, very happy to give you an overview of our project, our program. We have, most of our projects are transportation-related. We do have some recreation facilities and city facility upgrades as well as a public safety project. We're about 84% complete with our projects, and we expect to be completed by the end of 2015 or the first quarter of 2016. We have seven bridge projects in the city. We had deficiencies that were noted in those by our program manager. The largest project was the bridge over the Silver Comet. We replaced that bridge at Powder Springs Road with a tunnel that was completed in April of 2014 at just a little over $1 million. The next bridge project was a joint city-county project. That was the bridge replacement on Hopkins Road that was completed in 2013 at a cost of about $828,000. There were five additional bridge rehabilitation projects in the city. They were located at Powder Springs Creek, Lucille Creek, and Wild Horse Creek, and we completed those at just a little over $700,000. The city was very pleased to equip its police vehicles with computers and video equipment in 2012. That was our one public safety project that we have completed. The city is very excited to be working with Cobb County on its park project. The city of, the Powder Springs Park is located at Brownsville Road, just very close to Town Hall and the city hall and the town square. The project involves additional parking, enhanced ball fields, and the relocation of the pool that's located there to the county's Wild Horse Park project. We've actually issued the LDP, and BMPs are actually, I think, to be installed this week or next so that we can get underway with that project. This next project, some of you may recall or remember, when we constructed the Sailors Parkway, there were remnant parcels left over from that construction, and they are located adjacent to the Silver Comet Trail. It's about a 35-acre linear stretch, and there are four phases of that park project. We completed one feature of that project a couple of years ago, the pedestrian bridge over Old Lost Mountain. That was part of the 2005 SPOS program. This past Saturday, we had the ribbon cutting for the concession and restroom pavilion project at the trailhead that's located on Sailors Parkway across from the police department. And we have the beginnings of a new playground. The tree there was also open this past weekend, and we will be adding additional park features over the next several months to year as we collect additional impact fees. That project is funded in part with 2005 SPOS program. We had some 2011 SPOS dollars. We also use Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund monies, and we have a Parks and Impact Fee program that we also used. Our resurfacing budget is approximately $2.3 million. We issued the first contract in March of 2014. The second contract was issued this past summer. We expect to issue a third contract after the first of the year and then a final contract next summer. We will round out the program with sidewalk improvements on some local streets where we either have a gap in sidewalks or we have use from those residents, and we want to be able to provide those sidewalk facilities. They're located on Lindley, Sharon Park, Brownsville Road, Louise, and Preston Place. Those will begin next October. We've already completed sidewalks on Warren Farm Road. We have linked those residential subdivisions to the Silver Comet Trail. Anytime we've had an opportunity to create those links with the Silver Comet Trail, we've tried to do so. The project was completed in April of 2013, and the cost was about $297,000. And of course, like most of us, we've had to upgrade some of our facilities, do some repairs and renovations. We've replaced roofs. We have replaced flooring, doors and windows. We've had a time with our HVACs. We've done a number of replacements with that equipment. We've also done some ADA improvements, and to date, we have completed about $687,000 worth of improvements in the city facilities. This project is also an example of a joint city-county project. The city and the county several years ago relocated the old library from Marietta Street to its current home on Atlanta Street, and we participated together to develop that building. It opened in 1991. Street, and we participated together to develop that building. It opened in two thousand eight. It was an expanded building of about seventeen thousand square feet and it contained a multipurpose, open unfinished area of about seven thousand square feet that we were able to complete last fall. The Patricia Vaughn Cultural Arts Center, we fondly refer to that as the PAT. We completed that in November of two thousand thirteen at a cost of about three hundred and twenty eight thousand. We're very happy with the projects that we have been able to provide to our residents, particularly the ones that we've been able to partner with, with the county, and we're very pleased with the progress that we've made. We have spent six point six million of our ten point seven million dollar budget and expect to be completed by the end of two thousand fifteen or the first quarter of two thousand sixteen. So I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have. Mr. Jim Croy and Mr. Buddy Allison are here as well, and if you, if we don't have the information, I'll be sure to get it for you and get back with you.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. Terrific update. You guys look like you're rocking and rolling down there.
We are. We're very excited.
Good to get any questions or comments on the board? Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Thank you for the update. John?
Afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Actually, you see there is the former juvenile court on County Services Parkway that's being renovated for the Health Department. Next slide shows the eighteen point one million dollars that we have for SPOS projects allocated amongst those different departments and entities. Next slide. As you can see from this slide, on the right-hand side, we have planned on having sixty two projects completed at this time, and we actually have ninety eight completed. We were gonna have four under construction. We have ten under construction. We're gonna have eight in design. We have eleven in design. That only leaves sixteen that are not either completed, underway, or in design to finish in the next fourteen months. Next slide. We want to show you some highlights. This, we are doing two driver's license facilities. They're not actually one hundred percent funded by SPOS, but they have seed money, which the SPOS had for roof repairs and heating and air conditioning. We were able to use that money with other county money to build two buildings. What you see on this screen is the one on, in Kennesaw on Old US forty one. You see they're doing site work. If you look at the next slide, this is the one on County Services Parkway, and that's also site work. We're doing a lot of screening of the dirt that's coming off of the ballfield and using it here. Next slide. This is one of our lighting projects. This is Superior Court South, one of the older buildings, getting rid of the old lighting in there, putting in energy efficient lighting, save a lot of money on energy. Next slide shows heating and air conditioning, and that is not Smyrna Health, that's an era, that is actually Acworth Health, and those are all new units.
I knew that.
Yeah. Next slide, please. And that is the famous gold windows being replaced. You can still see a few of them down there on the level below the activity, but the windows that we put in are exactly the same windows that we used in the Superior Court building, the new building. Very energy efficient. Next slide. This is what we have planned for the next three months. We're working on design for the magistrate court. We're doing some landscaping at findings library. The Health Department continues with the renovation of the former juvenile court. That project will be done at the end of the year, and then we go and start on the renovation of the headquarters building, which will take a year to complete. Also doing door replacement at Smyrna Health. At Public Safety, we're replacing a driveway at Fire Station Twenty Three. We're in the middle of major heating and air conditioning at the three large senior centers and the other facilities, the two driver's license facilities, and we're doing some repairs and replacements at the former satellite inspection building by Lost Mountain. Next slide. So we spent three point four six million this year, two thousand fourteen to date. We've done an energy efficient window replacement. We've done five roof replacements, refreshments, five HVAC replacements, upgrades, two electrical renovations, some special projects, including elevator modernization at findings library, and we renovated the former Superior Court for the relocation of juvenile court to the Marietta Square. Are there any questions?
Good job, John. Excellent work. Obviously, these are not the items that the public looks for when they try to figure out why they should support investing in, reinvesting in our infrastructure, but it's so very important to our success and the quality of life and the projects we provide. So thank you for doing that. Comments on the board, Commissioner Gorham?
Not related to the SPOS, but related to property management. Kudos to you and your team on the VA clinic, the VA office building today. Some of us had the pleasure today to go to the ribbon cutting, and again, excellent work by your crew.
Thank you so much. I'll pass that along.
Thank you. Any other comments on the board? You will let the fire department know when that concrete is wet in front of their station, right? They have a tendency to...
They'll have to stay off of it for seven days, sir.
Okay. Make sure they understand that. I know how those guys are. Speaking of the fire department.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board of Commissioners, County Manager. And they do take the little sticks and ride in there.
I know they will. The handprints of glory, I'm sure.
There you go. As we, it's interesting that we're coming to an end, if you will, on the public safety projects. We are eighty five percent complete. Fifteen percent of the projects are underway and none planned after those fifteen percent are completed. The project highlights this time, our last four new fire trucks or engines should be delivered in March of two thousand fifteen. And again, these are, carry two hundred and fifty gallons of water pump, about fifteen hundred GPM, five hundred horsepower diesels, and carry about two thousand feet of hose. This is the last of the engines. There are a total of seven engines that were purchased in this SPOS. The next is our rescue truck. We have one that went into service in June of two thousand fourteen. And a reminder, it was assembled and purchased here in Marietta at Freedom Fire, and it's a F four fifty Ford chassis, and that's the total of nine rescues that were purchased through the SPOS. Although I don't have it, a reminder that there was also two ladder trucks at one point one million dollars each. It doesn't take long to go through thirteen million dollars when you're spending that kind of money, but been very needed for the maintenance of the fire department. The last project that we're working on, that we'll be coming back with, is Hazmat twenty two, and we're developing the specifications for that truck. It will be replacing an older nineteen ninety modeled International. And then should be accepting our thermal imaging cameras, sixty thermal imaging cameras in January of two thousand fifteen. Most up-to-date technologies, customizable graphics, electronic thermal throttles, super red hot colorization and temperature measurements. It's amazing the, the technology that they're, they're coming up with in the fire service these days. For the, like I say, we're coming to the end. Hazmat twenty two specifications, we'll come back to you as we get closer to that, and then we should be accepting our thermal imaging cameras in two thousand fifteen, and that will wrap us up.
Thank you, sir. Good, good report as well. Any questions from the board? Commissioner Gorham?
Yes. Actually, it's, it's a comment and, and a question for you, Director, regarding the proposed next SPOS. And one area is the training facility that we have out on Victory Drive, and while we were discussing the projects, I went out there one day to, to see the facility. I hadn't been there for a while, and I was somewhat amazed that half the parking lot is now being used as a training facility for our firefighters. Could you share with us, if indeed we're fortunate enough to have the SPOS passed, what's going to take place out at the training facility?
Sure. There's a lot of, I mean, the training center that we're currently using was built in the early nineties. When it was built, a total of about seven hundred public safety officials, fire and police were working at that time, and that's what the building was built for. And we've added, since then, we've added props and a firing range out there, and it's, now we're at fifteen hundred people.
So we've doubled, we've doubled.
We've doubled the size. So as you saw when we were out there, the gridiron that we used to use for driving and other training exercises is a parking lot too because of the sheer number of people that we have coming in there. At the same time, there's more and more certifications that are put upon both fire and police from different agencies to require certifications, which means we have to have more training. The other part is that's also training for recruits. So as we try to replace people who are retiring, we're seeing more and more of that happening these days. So it's a, it's a, it's a busy, busy place, and I'm hoping, you know, we're fortunate enough to get the next SPOS that we'll be able to upgrade areas at the current center and also do some new, new facilities.
And when I was out there, it was pointed out to me that I guess you're using like old railroad timbers or something to create sort of, is it an active shooter or a maze-type training facility out of the, the used railroad timbers were...
It is.
Were positioned.
We were fortunate enough to have several thousand railroad ties, old used railroad ties donated, and the training staff and, and police personnel took their time and built a makeshift shoot house, if you will, so they could work through as an active shooter training area to, to do just that, to, and that's been in place now for about five years, and so it's starting to deteriorate, as you can imagine, even though cross ties eventually get over.
And then it was pointed out to me that I think you actually use the education building for some of your active shooter training too, because people were telling that they couldn't use an exit because that was gonna be part of the training. So there's a lot of creativity and there's a lot of fugality going on out there, but what made the biggest impression to me was the fact that we were actually using a parking lot now for our firefighter training. Our needs are great, and, and I hope that the public realizes, you know, where the, some of the public safety men would, would be going to.
Commissioner, I'll say this. The, the public safety personnel truly have a can-do attitude. It's, it, sometimes we're our own worst enemies in that the more you throw at them, the more they're gonna do to make it happen. But as you have seen, it, you can only do so much with the limited space, and we get as creative as we possibly can, and sometimes it's, it's almost comical, but we get the job done.
Yeah. Obviously, when you're recycling old railroad timbers out there, there were quite a few, if I remember seeing them over there, but thank you for that update. And like I said, it had been several years since I had been out there, and I think at one point I could use that parking lot and I couldn't, so I think that's what made a, you know, a mark in my, in my mind here that, you know, we're training in parking lots now and with old railroad timbers, and it's time to address the need since we've increased the staff by fifty percent, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you, Director. Mr. Cannon?
Good afternoon. You can see this picture right here is the way it looked at Sewell Park this summer. Commissioner Otz, just right to the right of this picture, you can't see. But, yes.
Oh, okay.
But no, a lot of enjoyment out of that new aquatic facility there at Sewell Park. Next slide is a slide you've seen before. That's kinda how we were broke down in the SPOS. Next slide. This is where we are right now. We have completed projects thirty percent, construction underway thirty eight percent, design and engineering underway twenty eight percent, and future projects four percent. I will tell you, at this time right now, it is the most construction that's ever happened in the park system in its history. It's amazing what's going on system-wide. Just about every park is being touched right now. Associations and, and, and people that use our facilities have been wonderful, knowing we've got to get through this period, get this construction done, and they're gonna have a great facility to use following that. But there's a lot of activity going on right now. This is across the county, our map that shows you where projects are going on, what's been completed and future projects. Next, we'll start with actual projects going on. I was asked Commissioner this morning to go by Kenworth Park and see what's happened up there. It's pretty amazing, a total facelift. You used to could tell a huge difference from the front part of the park, which is a city of Acworth Park, to the back part of the park. You're now not gonna be able to tell that difference. It's all gonna look the same. It's gonna look brand new. I think our backside will look better than there. So we're excited about that. The tennis center building is almost...
You're talking about Ot again?
Do what now?
You're talking about Commissioner Ot again?
I'm sorry. But, yeah. The tennis center building is about ninety eight percent complete. It's a beautiful building that sits there at the tennis center. We're redoing concession stands, ball fields, parking lot. We're actually gonna use reclaimed water from one of the water plants up there that we will irrigate with in that park also. Next is Hyde Farm. This has got underway this, this past quarter. It's pretty amazing. This is before and after. Our contractor's doing an unbelievable job. He actually took this apart piece by piece, labeled every bit of it, labeled every rock, labeled every board, and then put it back together with wood that he could use, and it's amazing what's being done out there. So we're really excited about that. We have the house, the main barn, and eleven outbuildings to do. Construction is about twenty percent complete. Next is Shaw Park. Shaw Park is probably one of our most challenging parks in our system for ADA reasons. We've had to make a lot of improvements there to be able to get folks two ballfields from parking lots into one ballfield to the other. That's a lot of the improvements we've done there. You can see the cross tie wall that we took out and put in a block wall and also repairing some concession restroom buildings also. Next, next is Hurt Road. Basically, this is another park that's getting a total facelift. You can see the, the air shots that show construction going on. We're basically going in redoing all the athletic fields, making two football fields out of one area that we use softball and football, new maintenance building, and then construction's about thirty percent complete there also. Wild Horse Creek Park. Pam mentioned this a while ago with Powder Springs. We're, we're closing the facility at Powder Springs Park, and we're actually building a new aquatic center at Wild Horse Creek Park, which is in, in Powder Springs also. It's underway right now. You can see what's gonna be there. It's gonna be a lazy river, bathhouse, parking, slides, pool. There'll actually be enough water that you can do swimming lessons. Construction's about twenty five percent complete. The next slide is gonna be an overview of that. You can see before, there was two softball fields sitting beside the Recreation Center. Now you can see the aquatic center, the extra parking going behind the center that is desperately needed in that park. It's gonna change the whole look of that park from the road. It's really gonna be exciting. If you remember correctly, this is a place where during the summer, during our camps, this is a walkable community that they can walk to our center. Can you, can you, it's gonna be amazing what's gonna happen to that aquatic facility in the summertime. We're really excited about that. Recently started activities is Bartlett, Bartlett and Cato Dams, Core Property Bridge, Civic Center. Plans are being done, Sweat Mountain Park Improvement, Bells Ferry Park Improvements, Eastern District Office at Noonday Park, and groundwater, groundwater wells in our parks. Under construction, Oregon Park, Powder Springs Park, Civic Center Message Board, if y'all have seen that the last week, that's been going on, Ryan Park, Thompson Community Center, Hyde Farm, Maple House, Art Center Edition, and Ward Recreation Center interior improvements. In the fourth quarter, we will start Terrell Mill Park concession restroom building, Milford Park rehabilitation, Jim Miller Park. You're gonna see a lot of underground stuff start there, and we're gonna be redoing one of the midway restrooms also. Kenworth Park parking lot, joint with Acworth. Remember, we're doing that joint project with them. That's kinda in the middle of the park. Lost Mountain Park Buildings, which will be restroom buildings, Trademore Park concession stands, Fair Oaks Park rehabilitation, Fuller's Park Maintenance Building. Impacts we've had, you've seen this slide before, but we feel like throughout the SPOS, air quality in our aquatic centers have been huge, cross tie wall replacements, ballfield lighting improvements, upgrade to current codes, fire protection, ADA access, electrical upgrades, usability and visitor experience, concession restroom upgrades, new scoreboards, and we're definitely serving new user groups throughout our whole park system. So a lot going on in the park system. Everybody hang in there with us. We're gonna get there, and it's gonna be well worth it.
Well, we'll hang with you. Thank you very much. A great report. Any comments on the board? Commissioner?
Eddie, this isn't really related to the SPOS project at Harrison Park, but last week I attended a ceremony. but, um, last week I attended a ceremony for the rededication of the marker for the, uh, Daughters of the American Revolution. And they couldn't thank you and your staff, but especially Benji Brumblow for all his hard work with them and making that happen. It was a great event and, um, I just wanted to thank you publicly, you and Benji especially.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to thank you and your team, Eddie, for all the work that you're doing across district for, um, it never felt so good to drive across the district and see so much dirt in our parks because we know with that is coming improvement. And, um, I've heard a lot of comments from residents with respect to Wallace Park. And it's been a while since I've been out to that particular facility, but it feels good to get some outside feedback and it's like it's moving in the right direction.
It's amazing what Wallace has done already for that community. It's brought them back into the park and, um, it's been really good, really good for the program.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gorham?
Yes, Eddie, I think you began your, um, presentation with a comment regarding the ambitious number of projects that we have uh, at the parks. Uh, but one thing to remember, and if I remember this correctly, you were a- a- at the beginning of this SPOS pro- um, process, uh, the comment that was made that most of our parks or the average age of our parks are thirty years, if not greater. So, that would in, you know, show here why at this point where we have the number of projects that we do and the scope of the projects that we do. You know, our, our people love our parks to death and, and we have to keep up with that and make certain that they're in the best shape that they can be, so.
Yeah, the mar- the majority of our park system was built in the seventies and really no major renovation has been done since then. So, that's why we need this so desperately. Yes.
Can't wait to go up to Kenworth to see the chances up there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you, sir. Director?
With all due respect to my colleagues, sir, we've saved the best for last, so.
That's between you and them.
Transportation report, the picture, let's go back for just a minute. The picture of the construction project that's up there is Six Flags Parkway at Lee Industrial Boulevard. Just wanted to point that out before we get into the presentation. So, the transportation component of the twenty-eleven SPOS is primarily focused on infrastructure preservation and safety and operational improvements, congestion relief, traffic management, followed with a, a smaller component of transit. We now have a hundred and seventy-nine transportation projects, um, underway. Most of those are completed, a, a large number of those are in progress. Um, so by the time that we, I guess, next report, we should have a really substantial number of completed projects. In addition, there's, uh, about twenty-three percent of the projects are in design or engineering, um, with only about eight percent of the projects yet to be started. So, we are certainly moving the project forward in a very ambitious manner. Projects that were completed this quarter include bridge projects, drainage projects, sidewalk projects. Um, projects that had construction starts this quarter included other drainage projects and bridge projects, sidewalks, and also notably expansion projects like the Wendy Hill Road projects. Transportation, uh, active project status, currently there are forty-two projects in pre-construction and twenty-three projects in construction. As of September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, we've completed a hundred projects. The projects that are in construction, and I won't call, call them all out, but I do think it's important to note the array of project types. So, we have drainage projects, we have signal upgrade projects, we have a lot of sidewalk projects, and of course, um, the very important resurfacing projects that are going on, um, in every district in the county and across all parts of the county. Project highlights include the Wendy Hill Carter improvements, widening and reconstruction to six lanes with a raised median and intersection improvements between Spectrum Circle and Ka Parkway. The construction contract was awarded September of two thousand fourteen. Uh, the groundbreaking was recently held and we expect the construction to last about two years. John Ward Road at Cheatham Hill Road is the construction of a single lane roundabout. Addition of sidewalk on John Ward Road from Ellis Farm Drive to Dallas Highway and on Cheatham Hill Road of from Kennesaw Mountain National Battlefield Park to John Ward Road. Um, that project is scheduled for completion in August of two thousand fifteen. The Skipspan Connector, which is the new roadway over I seventy-five that connects Fry Road to Busby Drive and Town Park Lane, providing direct access between the growing Kennesaw State University and the Town Center Economic Activity Center. This will also improve pedestrian and bicycle access, which is really important for the students at KSU. Um, and this project is scheduled for completion in March of two thousand sixteen. And Dr. Pout calls us to inquire about that project about, uh, once every two weeks, so. Project highlights, sidewalk projects completed this quarter, ADA compliance sidewalk improvements, uh, Piscatah Road sidewalks, and we also mentioned Gaden Road on here, and I would call it out particularly because this was one of those partnership projects with the school district that we were able to complete and also able to complete it in time for a major event in the county that, um, was a, a showcase event, I think, for the county with the Corky Kell Classic. Project highlights on sidewalk projects in construction throughout the county include Bob Cox Road sidewalks, Ebenezer Road sidewalks, Pete Shaw Road sidewalks, South Gordon Road sidewalks, and those pictures are shown on the, uh, slide that's up now. Twenty-eleven SPOS resurf- think, resurfacing through September of two thousand fourteen. We bid thirteen contracts valued at over sixty-four point six million dollars, have covered over a thousand and fifty-four roads for three hundred and twenty-six miles of resurfacing. Um, the resurfacing contracts that have been awarded since October of two thousand eleven, which includes several from the two thousand five SPOS as well, sixteen contracts valued at seventy-six point three million, one thousand two hundred fifty-seven roads, three hundred and ninety miles. This is absolutely huge for us and really is sort of the heartbeat, I think, of our program. Next quarter planned activities include, um, ten projects that will be completed, including four sidewalk projects, two drainage, one roadway, and three resurfacing projects, eight construction starts, two drainage, one traffic signal, four roadway, and one resurfacing, and then two drainage and two sidewalk projects that are in design and engineering. SPOS, um, has made possible, uh, for more than eighty-five percent of our roads to have been resurfaced. Um, we know that this gives us some of the best maintained roads in the state. We've replaced over eighty bridges, provided many, many miles of new sidewalk along Cobb's roadways that provide pedestrians with safe access to schools, activity centers, and transit stops. Over two-thirds of Cobb's major thoroughfares have been constructed or improved by widenings and safety and operational improvements with a total investment of one point two billion. The total SPOS investments have enabled us all to, also to leverage more than three hundred and fifty million dollars in federal and state funds for planning transit and roadway and intersection projects. And despite those investments, we still have ongoing needs. That's all of our presentations.
That's good. As always, thank you very much, Director. Any questions for Mr. Maslow?
Yes, just similar to what I shared with Eddie, I'm very pleased to see the number of projects that are moving forward in the district and looking forward to the completion of that project that you had on the screen there, um, at Lee Industrial and Six Flags Drive.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And that concludes this presentation. I think the, uh, headline for tomorrow is that Cobb County is far and away ahead of schedule, on time and on budget with all its projects for the SPOS, the current SPOS. We're focusing on a lot of projects that needed to be done. And as itemized and pointed out by Eddie Cannon, that some of our parks are over thirty years old. Uh, when we feature replacing roofs and elevators in park systems, infrastructure, uh, we know that we're spending the money wisely and I think, um, the community can be proud of the work that staff. You guys are outstanding and I appreciate you all very much for making this happen so well and so, so positive for our citizens and visitors to come through. You guys are doing a great job. Keep it up. I don't see any citizen oversight committee members here. Uh, they, uh, they've decided, I guess, to keep working at their income generating. But we have a group of citizens that volunteer, um, to meet periodically throughout the year to oversee the SPOS expenditures and the projects that are being, uh, completed on behalf of the citizens. And they work independently and try to make sure, do the best, well, they don't try, but they do make sure that, uh, everything that we promised we would do, we're going to do and we are doing and are done successfully. And we appreciate those citizens making their contribution to our community. And we're going to double their pay raise, nibble their pay next month. Mr. Hankerson, anything to add?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
We stand adjourned until seven o'clock tonight. Thank you.